I did not, I've reached out to the fiscal commission twice this weekend, and today a third time after I've talked with Councilman Thomas, and I had a response from Trish, Trish, sorry, Trish Turner, State Fiscal Commission. So that definitely tied on authorized it, I'm going to figure out the contract. But it also gives us the time to develop a contract as well, with terms told, we don't see Matt reach. We have some questions left on the table from the last meeting. Councilman Thomas?
Well, there is, as I looked at the email that I received from that guy, there was a revision, and I want to know what is the revision from? It says revised.
Yeah, probably I understand. I think it's five times.
Okay.
Seven. I, when I revised in the email, is the original email, so time six P M. to eleven fifty-nine P M., and I made it six o'clock, that's one minute of the, that portion of the proposal, I was thinking that there's a machine time, like a computer, how the hard drive needs a moment to fire up to speed, so I allowed for that minute, but it's all the same, so from six P M. to midnight is how it stated in the proposal, as well as nine E M. to six P M. So instead of eleven fifty-nine, nine E M. to eleven fifty-nine, made it nine E M. to noon, and then six P M. to eleven fifty-nine, we made that six P M. to midnight.
Also, well, he's not here, but he called me, um...
Mark?
I think Mark, called me, and he has a lot of concerns, and the concerns deals with, um, the equipment, and the money that is supposedly owed to these legislators, and he has a lot of concerns, and expresses those concerns to me, so we need to be dealing with those issues. Mr. Stand here, can you hear me? A colleague, a friend. I'm saying, and I need to start talking about, right? I'm saying that Councilman Martin will not be here tonight, that's number one.
Okay.
Councilman Martin called me and expressed some serious concerns about us entering to into a contract with Mr. Leg, Mr. Fambro, Legacy Communication. And some of those, one of those concerns is the fact that the city owes him, supposedly owes his money. I differ with that. Also concerning equipment that was supposed to have been returned back to the Consular, from the Council, some time ago. Now, I don't think we need to discuss that tonight, because all of us is not privy to that. I think you are, Mr. President, and the Vice President, to the fact that letters has been written, and also the Law Director, that letters has been written for the return of the equipment. So I don't know if we need to discuss that here by Mr. Councilman Martin and the other Councilor not being here, but those were his concerns, and I'm delivering them, and there is things that we need to talk about. And also the fact that we have not communicated with the Commission to see, and supposedly the President was supposed to have gotten in touch with them, and we don't have any information about the letters, just for that.
You have a comment?
Yeah, a couple comments.
You run the tape, you run the tape.
Okay. All right. So I understand the concerns of Councilman Martin, who's not here, and if I'm not mistaken, he raised those concerns when he was here at the last meeting, that we brought that up. Now, I would ask that Legacy Communications, Mr. Fambro, that he address those concerns as he did the last time, so that every time they're brought up, no matter who brings them up, you just go ahead and squash them, because I thought we had talked through those concerns at the last meeting, but maybe I missed something. So if you don't mind, if you could go over them again.
Before you do that, could you show me where all those concerns were addressed and resolved in the minutes?
She just said she might finish, bro.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, is it in there?
Right, so, so, so here's the thing, and I'll ask him again, every time it's brought up, if you don't mind, go over it again, so we don't need to miss, just go over it again.
Well, let me say this, if we're, I don't need Mr. Fambro to go over the minutes again, I mean, the information again, or to deal with that. When it comes up, your voting will deal with what he's saying, or if you want to enter into a, enter into a contract. Number one, we can't enter into a contract, because we don't have any information that lets us enter into a contract, okay? That's one. And we don't have any information that tells us that we do have money.
So, I understand your concerns, but let me say this again, because I was at the last meeting, and if my memory serves me correctly, those same points of concerns were brought up and were addressed. So, I understand what you were saying, but because you brought them up again, I would like you to address them again, and when Nate shows up, and he brings them up again, I would like you to address them again.
Well, you can keep addressing them as long as you want to, but they're probably the same.
Let me interject, if you all don't mind. I, I think that, and I spoke to the Law Director earlier today, I think that what we need to do is move it to where the Law Director, or the Law Department, sit down with Legacy Communications, work out the contract, and those, that are identified from Martin and Barbara Thompson and so forth, be identified in the contract, whether they can address or not, and if not, then Council got to approve the contract anyway. Great thing I'm wrong.
I have no problem with that.
Same thing. You don't need to keep going on nothing. You've got a Law Director here, you've got information that is stated, get it out.
But Councilwoman brought it up.
I brought it up to say what the concerns were.
But he's already brought them up.
So what?
So how is that so what, but I'm saying go over it again, and you say, no, don't go over it.
Well, we don't need to go, he...
So it's okay to bring it up again, but it's not okay for him to go over it?
The President just said what should take place, and you're not taking his word, or you're not thinking that?
Absolutely.
Okay, then we finish, and the, the Law Director can go over and deal with it, and we come back and decide whether we want to deal with it or not. That's, that's simple, and you and I don't have to debate about that.
So what else have you said, Director?
Sorry.
So at this point, how do we, what's your recommendation, how we move with this?
We can, I can look at Mr. Fambro, and we can develop some provisions for the contract and bring them back to the body.
Okay, so we, so we need to table this until you get back with Mr. Fambro?
Then, I'm available next week, except for Monday.
And that'll give us another window to try to get some more information to her, and so forth?
Yes, yes. Because she don't have enough, you don't have authorization from the, from the powers to be that gives the authorization for the money.
Okay, so then that's, that's fine.
Okay.
So if we're not going this way, we're all kind of concerned on that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Fambro.
So, so I understand it. What are we doing with that?
We're tabling it for now, so they can, so they can talk, and then she come, when you come back to the table, it will be the contract as well, so we can see what these terms, we'll get it before, we'll get that before we even get to the meeting, so we can go over that. So all these questions be answered in the, in that contract.
Wait a minute, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, um, this is a little different. Now, some of the questions you just brought up about an old piece of equipment, how would that show up in the contract? How would, how would the money owed to him show up in a new contract?
We're not telling him about that.
So what are we talking about?
She just said it's held.
Please tell me again, I'm slow.
They're going to produce a contract, they're going to create a contract, and your contract will have some terms that, about that thing, that, that owes you, how it's going to be announced.
You're going to put that old debt in a new contract?
No, no.
You're going to handle it, you're going to handle it.
Fine, fine.
Yes, the law, he's a champ.
Yes, please.
I, I, to me, if we want to do that, we certainly can, but that's not why we presented the proposal. If you notice, the proposal does not mention the amount it's owed to Legacy Communications, nor does it mention any equipment. I just want you to bear in mind that the playback equipment, as I've shared with the Council before in committee, when Councilman Thomas was not here, the equipment is at Legacy Drive Facility, and it's utilized for playing back programs that are scheduled into the schedule. This is a piece of equipment that was purchased many years ago, back like oh-seven, back in there, two thousand and seven. It runs twenty-four hours a day, and it allows for one program to start, it allows for one program to play, and then a second program to come on and play, and so forth, based on a schedule, and that piece of equipment was purchased because it runs the channel more or less a TV station should run than someone sitting at a VCR having to put DVD in and take it out and put another DVD in and all of that, so that's, that's what's going on. But I'll strive to answer any, any questions, particularly regarding this proposal and subsequent contract, but in my mind, those other things are, you know, not to be in contract, because unless the Law Director is trying to play that line of, you know, love, nobody's developing a person. Let's take it from there.
Okay, any other comments, concerns on this?
I have none.
We continue to, you guys will continue to try and get in touch with those supervisors?
Yeah, I mean, I put in three calls to them. I'm surprised they haven't called me back yet.
They don't need to come up soon, so.
We want...
Two of you to get some...
I love it, yeah, I wasn't talking before the meeting, so if we do things in order, we can have it already done. Okay.
Yeah, but that's, what is that, that's the third, the third, and the meeting is the next day, we had three, we had the first and the third meeting, come for me, and then we go, have to go on the following.
The fiscal commission meeting, the fiscal committee meeting, the twenty-second.
So you say if they fall in first, too, they need to follow them on?
At the latest, hopefully she'll call and talk to them. Okay, thank you, thank you. I'll pass the gavel back, and I'd like to make a motion that we, I'd like to make a motion that we hear, we hear the concerns of the lease that's at the Helen S. Brown meeting. We talked about this a couple times before, and I didn't know the sense of urgency till this week. So, it's not on the agenda, but I'd like to make a motion to put it on the agenda.
Go ahead, Ellen, you thought? All right, motion to, you want to make it in addition to the agenda?
Yep.
For, what's his name, church?
Christ International.
Christ International, pass it through. Make a motion, motion, you make a motion, am I right?
Yes.
Motion second, move second, call the law.
Councilor Jones?
Yeah.
Councilor Vice President King?
Yeah.
Councilor President Wheeler?
Yeah. I'd like to make this.
Thank you for your time. Just want to present to you what we've done, we've kind of shared it briefly, and what we anticipated we needed to do, and what we ultimately determined that we had to do. When we came in the building, we had anticipated we would have a certain amount of repairs, we anticipated about ten thousand dollars at the worst case, based on what we had, were able to determine, and the heating, the air, the plumbing, we had no idea what that situation was. Ultimately, we determined, as we walked in the building, that the heating situation was dire, that we spent three thousand dollars repairing the main unit, which was the only one that was somewhat repairable. Heating, air conditioning companies determined that the other two units were not repairable, which we never anticipated that, so we replaced them. And that was significant money, that cost us about fifteen thousand dollars to replace those units, so we put brand-new units in the building now, so now the Helen S. Brown Center has complete air and heating throughout the building. I think one of the prior concerns before you guys closed it is that the city could not provide that for the building, we did it, we took care of it, a substantial expense to us, we raised money, we got donations, but the building has a complete heating and ventilation system in the building now, brand-new. Also, we did not anticipate we would have a plumbing, we walked in the building, when we turned the water on, it was like Noah's Ark, I mean, we got water from the ceiling, from the roof, from the ground, from the walls, from everywhere, so we spent thousands of dollars and almost six months of having service, literally with buckets of water. We had to have ushers go in behind people to flip the toilets, because we had, we could not turn on the water on a consistent basis, because it was leaking everywhere. So we personally had volunteers do about two thousand dollars of work, and then we had to bring in contractors do the rest of the work, which took us six months, because every time we turned it on, we discovered we had other major problems. So that incurred costs to us, so we ultimately ended up spending about twenty-nine thousand dollars all total, and we're not finished yet. We had to, when we replaced the units on the roof, they determined that the old units were four-phase electricity, we had to convert to three phases, so that required a transformer, which was forty-seven hundred dollars just for the transformer to transform the electric to the right phase, so we had to replace that. We had to put a brand-new panel box on the wall, because the old one was inadequate, it could not handle the current load, that was another two thousand dollars, we did that. We also have determined that in the basement, there were massive leaks in the basement that we, after we did all the repairs, we went to the water company to get our water turned on, they wanted two thousand dollars from us, because it was undetermined, that we couldn't find, because our initial agreement with the city was to leave the basement alone, we got it, in the basement, we just had massive water coming down in the basement, so that prevented us from replacing the hot water tank, because where the hot water tank was, was massive pools of water, which no one was willing, because it was bestows to go in and fix, so ultimately, we got someone to go in and fix that massive water leak in the basement. We could not replace the hot water tank in the basement, because of just the conditions, so we had to get an electric tank, which would cost us more money, had to break out a wall, find a place to put the electric tank, as I'm here, as I'm standing here, to put an electric tank in today, finishing that, so that's additional cost over and above what we spent. We've done it in good faith, not here to complain, not here to murmur and say we're unhappy, we're glad we were able to make those kinds of improvements in the building. As we were doing that, we continued to have service and serve the city, okay? We have passed out seven hundred meals since we've been in the building, we've done about fifty blood pressure checks, we've given our clothing, we've distributed to some other organizations, Councilman King has helped us distribute food to some other organizations in the city, we've partnered with the Fairhill Group, we're going to start doing pain management, diabetes management, we're also doing job, job application training, we have another group called the Cameron Avery Foundation, which is a homegrown nonprofit group, where we work with young women who have had miscarriages, and so we've paid for three cremations already for those, we never, we didn't know that situations existed, to one of our members had a baby die, you know, lost a baby last year, and created this kind of nonprofit group, we found that that's a real need, that these women have these babies sometimes, they're premature, and they died, they aborted, actually, and so they have no money to take care of it, so we've done that, too. So we've done all of this, that we've been able to do in the midst of doing the massive repairs we've done in the building, plus what we've done just to make the building habitable and decorated, so that our people will be able to have service. So what we're proposing to the city, asking the city to do, is we thought we spent ten thousand, we spent over thirty, over twenty-nine, I get the last bill properly today, and also, what we've also been able, we found out now, as we fixed the water, we determined that the main valve has a leak, which we don't know whether that's a city valve, we don't know what to do with that yet, we've got the Water Department coming out to determine, I think Councilman King has sort, we have big pool of water at the main line, so we just don't know what that's going to work out for us, how that's going to work out for us, and we also found out that the main panel, electrical panel in the basement, dates back to the time the building was put in, so they're basically telling us that if it wasn't for God, we would have been on fire, because as the water began to leak out of the pipes, it actually ran right down on the main panel in the basement, and some of the electricians, at some points, said we won't even touch the work, for ten, we found someone who would do it for us, but we have to replace that. We don't expect the city to do it, but that's going to have to be replaced, so we have ongoing expectation of another fifteen, twenty thousand dollars of expenses, because we're still going to have to repair the one unit that we managed to repair on the roof, which was barely repairable. One unfortunate thing is, because we put the new units on the roof, that what we've estimated as our monthly costs and utilities, we've gone under the budget, because of the efficiency of the new units, which all of this accrues to the city, as a benefit to the city, we've improved the building substantially, we've made the building pleasant to the eyes, we've made it functional. What we're asking the city to do is give us another six months, because we basically exhausted everything that we have to do, that we did not anticipate spending another nineteen thousand dollars more than what we said we want to spend, you know, we're not coming to the city saying we're broke, that we can't pay rent, we're just saying, in light of what we've done, the good faith that we've shown, we've had, we've had Council people come out to show that we didn't, didn't make this up, in light of what we've done, the good faith that we've shown, we're here for the long run, we have an investment in the community, we have an investment in the building, you know, we didn't, we didn't, for lack of a better term, we didn't germinate, you know what I'm saying, we didn't go get to homegrown air conditioners to put them on the roof, we put everything right back to spec, and as you know, that cost us real money. So we're asking the city to extend our renovate for another six months, so number one, we can recover some money, and secondarily, we don't, we're not sure what our other expenses are going to be, and these are not decorative expenses, these are expenses that we, we may have to incur to be able to function in the building, and so that's what we're asking, we'd like the city to consider that in light of what we've done so far, and the community service that we've rendered, in very dire, extreme conditions, we still try to keep our commitment to render service to the community. We'll also get ready to buy an industrial stove, we promised we would do some extended feeding, we've had to feed now, because we had no stove, and we thought there was one, there's none, so we had to have our members cook at home, we're buying a commercial stove that another costs about a thousand dollars, we're looking for donations to do that, so we can continue to increase our ability to serve the community. So we're asking just the city to take over seeing consideration, give us another six months, so we can continue to invest in the building, which is seeable, it accrues to, it accrues to the city, and helps us be able to perform ministry and community services. That's our request.
Well, I think, I think we need to take it under consideration, discuss it, and also talk to the Law Director, and also deal with the financial part of it. I have a question, and I have no doubt, I didn't need to go up there, okay?
Okay.
By the grace of God, you did make it, and he's always there to give his grace...
Yes.
...to these people that's doing his work. My question to you, and I know the history of how you got up there, and why you came into a Helen S. Brown, but my, my thing is that, basically, when you start into a, a project, and I'm going to call it a project, because it is a project, did you start with a contractor, and get estimates on what we might need? Because I just had a boiler person come out, and I didn't have no heat, and I'm telling you this story, because, and we called the boilerman from the, was it Preservation Restorative, the individual that came here and gave a beautiful presentation on how they restore old houses, old buildings and everything, so he came, and he looked, and I had had several other boiler people come out, this one in particular looked, and he also told me that there was, unbeknown to me, a leak in the wall, and he had to find it. Well, he had already given me a price, but considering anything else that come into play, he would have to charge more, and he estimated, estimated how much more it would cost. So, heaven above, he tore out my wall in the harbor, and my kitchen, they ate that hole, and I was thinking, oh, God, he's going to tear out my new kitchen, but as it happened, he told me, it's got to be sixteen inches, you, da-da-da-da-da. So he found the leak, and it had been leaking for years, apparently, and that's why he couldn't fill up the boiler like it's supposed to be, and then there were other things that took place, but that's neither here nor there. But he explored what was happening that might cause the problem to keep me from getting heat, and he worked on it. My question here, going back to what I'm asking you, was there a general contractor that could have performed all these, who's given you estimates on what might happen, or as we go into these things, this is going to cost you more money? And the reason I'm saying this is because you took on a job, and it was an admirable job, that would have serviced you, because you wanted to get your own church, you wanted to serve your people, which was the congregation, and also have a decent place that you could call your own. So I'm asking that air and the heating, which could have been, it's a cooling and heating, which is a heating and cooling person?
H VAC.
H VAC, yeah, my son's one, H VAC, and also, under all of that contractor, a plumber, under that, some idea of having a electrician, and all, all of that. Now, that's all I'm asking, because your investment in here is running you over twenty-nine thousand, and you started off with ten thousand, so what I'm saying is that I'm conceding to you... So what I'm saying is that I'm foreseeing to you, all these things is happening, and in my book, it says, God help those who help themselves. And you're trying very hard to do that, so that's why I'm saying, let us take this in consideration, talk to the law director, if it's all right with you guys, and see what we come up with. And if, if it's that we have to do something else, we still have to have money to even, uh, readjust this for even six months. Okay? As it is with, uh, Legacy. I don't, we don't know where the money is, but we sure are going to do our best to take you under consideration and do what we can, me as Councilman Thomas.
Well, we're, we're not asking for any money.
I know you're.
We're done with our own money, and to answer your question, when we first approached council, we had, we had quotes, um, to the degree that we had access to the building. You know, we had heating and conditioning guy go on the roof, he determined that he believed the units were repairable, basically access that we had. We had, we had little information, because we had some access to your prior maintenance people, who were kind of aggravated, because of the way they left, so getting information out of it was very difficult to do. So based on the information we were able to get, and the limited history, his determination was, I believe I can repair them all for six thousand dollars, possibly more. He did repair one, determined the other ones were just unrepairable. Our mindset is like the old explorer, when we moved to the Helen S. Brown Center, we burnt the ships, we had no place to go. So we figured, okay, we're here, we made a commitment, we think we can raise the money, let's do it, we think we will make an investment in the city, you know, you know. We could abandon the ship, now, you can go get a hotel, and say, well, let's go have a church and hotel, and hey, lay it with this, pay six hundred dollars a month, be done with it, but we put our name out there as a church, we believe in the community, me and my wife are looking to buy a house in this community, we are invested here. And I told my people, because I've got elders who said, what the heck, Pastor, wait a minute, we didn't bargain for this, okay? But I, my posture as a leader was, listen, we came here, let's make the investment, the city showed good faith in us, and I believe the city will honor what we've done so far, because we took a situation that we, the city could not do, at least in its current state, could not do, and we did what the city could not do. And so we looked at it from multiple viewpoints, we're investing in the city, we're investing in ourselves, you know, we had an alternative path, you know, we burnt the ships, in the sense that integrity with that state, but an ultimate path was, as churches do all the time, we could go run a hotel and be there, and would not have to spend another nineteen thousand dollars. But that was not our posture, our posture was, listen, we're here for the long run, we signed the lease, we made a commitment, we have potential, so we raised the money, and, uh, you know, and some of the things that we did, we could have gotten around, we could have not replaced the panel box, had a fire risk, and said, hey, what the heck, it's a city responsibility, but we did. Uh, you know, the transformer was optional, they could have geraried and tried to run four-phase and three-phase, I don't know how they would have done that, could have been a big risk, we spent the money. So we're just saying, we made an investment, and we're not asking you give us any money, just help us finish it up.
Ask.
Yes.
There's nothing that you haven't said to me that I don't believe.
Okay.
There is nothing, you're singing to the choir.
Okay.
And this choir master. This choir master has said, let's put it here.
Okay.
And discuss what we can do.
Okay.
Because you're saying you're not asking for monies, you're asking for time.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're not gonna evict you, because you don't have the monies, you come in here to tell us of your part.
Right.
I'm saying you should have told us of your plight when you first started getting into this situation.
Well, I, I did, I did commit with Councilman King, all the way along the way.
You know what, you know what? Pastor, I'm gonna tell you right now, when you go high, there's five Councilmen, Councilman King is one of those five, okay? He has one voice, and he can communicate all he wants to, but there's five of us. And you have not reached out to me, I don't know whether you reached out to the president or not, but you have not reached out to me. I can't say, I can't speak for Martin, I can't speak for, um, uh, Joey, Ms. Graham, but I can say, when you're reaching out and you're asking for, uh, consideration, or has a problem, you gotta reach out first. And I saw all the pictures that you brought, and they are beautiful. And like I say, trust is earned, and you have earned our trust. You have, that, with, with labor and, uh, funds into a building that some, a lot of us threw aside. So I have no problem with that, all I'm saying is that when you come, and you seem to be very humble, come to all five of us.
Didn't even know it.
Okay.
Didn't know the protocol, but I learned it quick.
It don't matter, you got, if somebody got a problem in your church, they'll either come to you, or the trustees, or the deacons.
I hope they don't go to the trustees.
Well, they're happy, so I have, we have a pastor, and we have a vice president, so I'm, I'm just saying, and I, I'm making the recommendation that we put it.
Okay.
And take it into consideration, and also take into consideration the work that you, and the labor that you have put in, and that you are a man of God, and that means a lot to me.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
There you go.
I, I, I've been offered the opportunity to come by, and I would like to. But I'll, I'll make a.
Councilman Martin came up to give him a service on Sunday, and so, uh, I will make a point, uh, in another week, I'll get out there.
Okay.
You know, no matter what you do, how much you do, and it's all I say at the end of the day, is the city's property, so thanks for the improvements.
I got that.
And, and I understand, think to be a financial strength, when you're trying to do this, that, and the other, and you're trying to get everything done, you gotta, you know, but you gotta take care of what's uncertain, you know? Not many agreeance with Councilman Thomas, sit down with law department, finance department, see, and make an educated decision. Right, right information.
At the end of the day, we, we have to start paying, and we'll do that, you know, we, we just want to be able to function and operate, and not like you're saying, we don't have any money left, we just want to be able to function and.
Well, we're putting everything on law director, we're just gonna look like over the next Chicago.
Well, I think what he's addressing is that it was supposed to, uh, start in February the, uh, so I think he wants to convey it as simple as that.
Yes.
So, that's, I think was on the table now.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Eric, so, I probably shouldn't have went first, but here's where it's in the utmost urgency, right? And I was looking at this, because I've been working with the pastor and the church since before, you know, since before they signed the lease and we went into this. And over the years, I've been through the Helen S. Brown building, so pretty much know, you know, what it looks like, how it functions, and keep in mind, when it was closed down, the heat wasn't working, right? Remember that, right? Didn't have any heat when it was closed.
Nobody's in there.
Okay, so, I was looking at this to get the date, so it was back in early November, when I, when I took these pictures, and I came before council, and I gave an update, and I stated that he would be asking for some sort of an extension, because he's having all types of overruns. And keep in mind, when you're doing work that he's doing in the facility that he's in, your insurance wants to know that you have a licensed electrician, you can't have Jimmie Reed anything. I would ask, and I would encourage, not just the residents, but council, go out there, take a look at the upgrades and the changes that he's made, go to some programs, because I was there at some programs, to see, you know, exactly what he's doing, and the service that he's providing. Now, I think we need to address this rather soon, because the, he's actually supposed to start paying this month, and part of the challenge with that is, and we don't know this, how it works, when I met with Pastor Prue recently, he was saying he was waiting on the mayor to come out, but the mayor couldn't make it to come out. So he, and he wasn't sure how, who grants the extension, if the extension is, you know, grantable, who does it, so he was kind of waiting on that.
Well, if you want me to draft a resolution, if you guys can hold it up or down.